The formal session for Yamhill County, February ninth, 2017, formal session of the Board of Commissioners. And if we could start with a pledge of allegiance, and I'm going to ask McKayley to lead us again.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a time we have set aside for invocation, and I've asked Kay Sawyer to do the invocation for us today, so if you would, please, Kay. Kay is the Director of the Gospel Rescue Mission here in town and does an amazing job for helping the less fortunate in our community, so thank you, Kay.
Father, I just come before you. Father, I just come before you, and I thank you, Father, for this time, this day. I am proud to be part of this community, and I know you're proud also. Father, I thank you for the plans and purposes that you've set forth for Yamhill County, City of McMinville, and the surrounding cities. I know that these are plans to prosper and plans to bless, and I'm grateful. So, Father, I just ask for the wisdom, the courage, the knowledge, the boldness to accomplish those plans and purposes. I thank you for the people that you've put in place in this community, the leaders that we pray for daily, and I just thank you, Lord, that you are using them and you are speaking through them, and I'm just thankful and grateful for all that you've done for this city, for this county, and for all the people here. So, we just bless that, and we thank you, and we praise you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, can I just say something about Kay?
Yes, you may.
Um, I think this is a, Kay is an example of what one person and a few people can do to make a huge difference, and I, the story of Kay being, working for YCOM and hearing that there's somebody in a, a woman in a parking lot who has nowhere to sleep that night, and goes around and they collect money from the firefighters and the police officers and sheriff's deputies to get a motel room, and from that, the mission was born, and then you see now the expansion of it. So, it's one person and, and people like Dave that have come along beside her, so I'm, this is, she's one of my heroes.
And the community.
And the community.
Thank you very much, Kay. This is a time we have set aside for public comment, speaking to an item that is not on the agenda or is not a quasi-judicial item, and we would limit these comments to three minutes, and I do have one intent-to-speak card, and that is from Brian Schmidt. Schmidt, if you would come forward, please, Brian.
Good morning. My name is Brian Schmidt, 7580 Northeast Central Street, Carlton, Oregon 97111. Good morning again, Board, German. On January, so you'll have a letter I just sent, and I'm just going to roughly read it, and then there's some quotations at the bottom from the, it's actually the exact wording from a section of your meeting that you had here, January nineteenth, and, oh, okay, so on January nineteenth, 2017, Mr. Commissioner Chairman Primzich, you stated that a Farming Pact study does not have to be done as a whole, as a whole, on this Yamhailis project, but simply farmer per farmer, you said, because Yamhailis is in our TSPC, you said. And I believe I am on this section that you speak of, and I, I'm actually in two sections, and I don't think you've collected any of my impacts, because I haven't told them to you, so I'd just like that record, that stricken from the record and clarified, despite what you testified. Also, next, ORAS 215-296 requires the Commission to find that the path will not force a significant change in accepted farm practices nor increase the cost of those practices. Is the microphone picking me up?
Yes. You can pull it up if you want to use it.
Okay. If the Commission is unable to develop appropriate mitigation conditions to avoid the prohibited impacts on neighboring agricultural operations, it must deny the application. Due to the potential for significant impacts to neighboring agricultural operations, such a review is appropriate and consistent with Oregon land use legislation. And that was testimony given almost two years ago in this room to this board, different, before Mr. Olson was on board. Okay, so you are about to purchase a property that will create additional problems for the county, and you haven't yet done this feasibility study, and I ask you now that one of you three please make a motion to halt the closing of this purchase, property purchase of the UP property until completion of the, of the 215-296 feasibility Farming Pact study. This process has been outlined by County Councilmember Todd Sallow at your January nineteenth meeting, also by Oregon Farm Bureau numerous times, and by the DLCD in two memos addressed to all of the Commissioners in Oregon to clear confusion on this matter. The Connect Six Oregon Grant is stipulated for a project that you cannot finish until you do this study, yet you're marching forward. Are you willing to endet the county when you must return these funds, when you find that perhaps this is not feasible? Below is a direct word-for-word quotation, January nineteenth, and I put the link to the video if you want to go and watch that. Commissioner Starett said, but this is not a Farming Pact study, I'm just cutting in halfway, and Primzich responded, because this is in our existing TSP, it's not required to do a Farming Pact study, we have to do a study on the impact of the individual farms as we do any work adjacent to the farms to mitigate. Commissioner Starett said, that sounds like a circuitous way of avoiding the topic, and then Primzich, you yielded to Sallow, or you asked Sallow to clarify, and he did, and he did not agree with you, it doesn't seem to me. And I've contacted the DLCD, and they seem to think that Sallow was correct, and so I'm here now to, to ask you to please halt the UP purchase until you perform this feasibility study.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Brian.
Brian. I have no other intent-to-speak cards, so with that, we will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the presentation of a check to our, the Gospel Rescue Mission to do some capital improvements there, and I would ask my fellow Commissioners to join me as we present this to Mr. Hagerberg and to Katie.
It was requested of the county here last spring that we would participate in the helping to create a safe haven for the less fortunate in our community, and the Gospel Rescue Mission and the McMinville Community Foundation has been working very, very hard and tirelessly to make this happen, and they had requested funds from the county to assist with this, and we are very, very pleased this morning to be able to present them with a check from the county for that work in the amount of $150,000. And if you would, we will take some pictures of this, but the work that they've been doing up on Fourteenth Street is nothing short of amazing, and I believe, you told me that the other night when it was so brutally cold, we had thirty-three or thirty-seven people that were able to spend the night in warmth because of that building, so.
Katie, would you speak to that? Yes. Thank you so much. It's amazing how far we've come, like you were saying, it's just, I never, you know, I never really dreamed we'd get this far. I had no idea how it was going to happen, but, you know, prayer does amazing things. But we've completed our first phase, which was the shelter, the overnight shelter that opens in the evening at five and can provide dinner, breakfast, and then the folks leave around nine. Unfortunately, we can't help the people during the day when it's really cold, because it has been, and I would love to be able to do that at some point down the road, but I just, I'm grateful. We've been to capacity in the last month, we've been full and above that, and so what we've been doing is sending some of the people over to the other building that had a couple beds available so that we can at least accommodate as many as we can, but we've had up to forty-two, and pretty much we've been full. And so I'm grateful for the city helping us with that, and now we're moving to the next phase, which you're helping with, and I'm very appreciative for that, because we need the extra room. We've got a lot of people that's come to the shelter that's actually decided to get on our longer-term stay with the facility. So, when we open the men's facility, we'll have those beds available. The nice thing about that is we can actually facilitate jobs for these people, because we're, we've gotten a lot of help from the community wanting to help us with a program that gives the basic job skills, so it's going to be more structured, and we're going to have that oversight to make sure that these people, there's so many jobs out there, I found out, but they require certain skills, and so we can actually tailor that according to the jobs that are available. So, I'm very excited to be able to do that, I'm excited to be able to put more people in a building for a longer stay, and it's just been great, so thank you, thank you so much. I'll let Dave say a few words.
You know, I just want everybody to act, to understand and to echo what you said, Commissioner Starett, about the incredible things that, that the mission and with the leadership and the founding of that mission by, by Kay Sawyer, and it's a person who has committed herself to those less fortunate and has spent a great deal of time and extraordinary talent in bringing this program together. The McMinville Area Community Foundation is proud to be a partner in this project along with a lot of people, and I'd like to first start by saying, the school district contributed the building that now is being used for the shelter for the homeless on all these cold nights, and so, an incredible step by your school district as a partner, the county as a partner now in this next facility, we'll talk about it in a moment, the city of McMinville is committed to be a partner. So, right now, we've raised over $800,000 in gifts, pledges, cash, in-kind contributions, and, and over $600,000 of that has come from the community, so it has been an incredible partnership with everybody involved to make this happen. The first phase is about $350,000 is done, the property's purchased, the shelter's in, and it's operating. The next phase, where the county is so incredibly important, is the building with the men's facility and the training opportunities that'll happen as a part of that, and I can tell you with, with the money that we're getting from the county, from the city, we're at almost $200,000 for that building. The land has been prepared for it, so that part of it has been paid for, we're working on another significant contribution, and if that happens sometime, I hope later this month, we will have the money to start the planning and to begin to look at construction of that men's facility. We hope it will start this summer, and will be ready, you know, you always are more optimistic than you ought to be, but hopefully it'll be able to provide additional space and opportunities by the end of the year, so it wouldn't happen without an incredible partnership. The use of, the McMinville Area Community Foundation provides to you, the county, and the public, the assurance that when, when they hold the money, they make grants to the project, and so as the construction goes forward, the Community Foundation will see them, will take those dollars and apply them to that construction, so that everybody knows when you put dollars into this project, you're going to get a building, you're going to get a program, and you're going to get results, and, and that's incredibly important, and what an extraordinary partnership by the community and this Commission, and so the community's in your debt. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all you do. And you, you get the real one. Okay, we will now move to item B of our agenda for this morning. Do I have a motion?
I have a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
It's been moved that we approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign?
Aye.
We will move to old business, we have none. Other business, I see only nothing, so we'll move to item, yeah. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Item E is a public hearing, an appeal by Protect Grand Island Farms and the Planning Commission's approval of a request by Baker Rock Resource Inc., floodplain development permit to allow mining on approximately 175 acres of property within the flood hazard overlay district. Applicant Baker Rock Resources Inc., appellant Protect Grand Island Farms, and we will be reopening the public hearing docket, continued from Thursday, February second, 2017, and we will reopen at the point of staff recommendations, so if you would, please. Oh, I need to open.
Okay, there have been a variety of issues raised with this application. These include, but are not limited to, farmland preservation, groundwater protection, pit capture, flood velocities, off-site impacts, and the Endangered Species Act, and, and these are all important issues, and some of them may actually hang up the application in the future, but they're not directly part of this application. This request really comes down to a single issue. Does the application satisfy the floodplain development standards? And these standards are found in Section 901 of the Yamhill County zoning ordinance, and specifically, Section 901.09, it's what's called the no net rise standard. This no net rise standard requires the applicant to submit a report from a registered professional engineer demonstrating through hydrologic and hydraulic analysis performed in conformance with a standard engineering practice that the proposal will not result in any increase in flood levels during the occurrence of the base flood discharge. The opposition raised the issue of the applicant needed to do additional calculation of the no net rise standard and looking at only the floodway, presuming that the flood fringe had been filled in. We have not required that in the time that I have been here, so I looked further into it. I could not find any Luba cases on this point, and I also consulted with the previous director, and he had not heard of such a requirement, so I also checked Section 60.3D sub-three of the National Flood Insurance Program and found the language, and that's the language that the opponent had cited, and that language is the same as what we have in our ordinance, and so from what I have found, this additional modeling is not required. Therefore, the applicant submitted the required modeling and the engineering report to address this requirement, and we are required to recommend approval of the application with the conditions noted in the staff report. And having said all this, does that mean that our office has no concerns about gravel mining on Grand Island? No, we do have concerns, and I'm especially concerned about the potential for another Grand Island application that would take out more prime farmland, and this is not just high-value farmland, but prime farmland, class one and two, and I would like to see that result minimized. And I mentioned at the Planning Commission that, you know, this board has not seen this issue before, and they may want to consider whether this issue is important enough to pursue a bill at the legislature to limit sand and gravel operations on class one and two prime farmland, but that's all a separate issue from this application. I want to make it again clear that I do not think this application should be denied, with conditions Baker Rock has complied with the floodplain development criteria, and I recommend approval with the three conditions passed by the Planning Commission.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have had the staff report. I will close the hearing, and we will go into deliberation.
Thank you, Mr. Friday, and thank you, Stephanie, for all your assistance in this. This, I want to give a bit of a prologue to this. Before I was on this board, I spent some time out at some of the meetings, the group Protect Grand Island, and actually toured the farm with a farmer by the name of Ron Schindler, and he told me the history of the farm, and he showed me all the different, the orchards and everything that was growing there, and I thought to myself, wow, I can certainly understand why there's concern about this removal of farmland, and then also the use of this area for aggregate mining. And this was not before this board, this is not a decision that any of us had anything to do with, there were other decisions made prior to this that bring us to this point. So, while I feel like, this is kind of, I feel like this has been sort of dumped in our laps in terms of all of these different processes have occurred, dealing with dust and traffic and noise and all of those concerns, what, what's before us right now is really dealing with a very limited question, so we're not allowed to kind of go back and look at that information, that's already been decided, it's been rezoned, all of those conditions were applied, all of this stuff had been addressed. So, so we're now dealing with whether or not this, this permit should be, should go forward. I think that the Planning Commission and the Planning Department have all said, hey, we don't, we don't like this, but that's not what we're asked to do here. We're not asked to say whether we think it's a good idea, or we like it, or we don't acknowledge what the impacts are going to be to the people who live there, but we have one question to answer. Did the, did the, did the evidence show that there was going to be no net rise? Did Lidstone's analysis say that there was going to be no net rise? My question was, there are competing engineers here, until we discussed that there was not an additional study done by the opponents to counter the analysis that Lidstone had done, to say, what you came up with just isn't true. So, that had to be taken off the table, at least for myself. So, again, you know, as Mr. Friday mentioned, we're dealing with farmland, we're dealing with water quality, we're dealing with the whole floodplain issue, and I have to come up with the, with the conclusion that, that the floodplain permit, based on what we heard, there are no grounds to deny that, and, and that the code we have doesn't preclude development. And so, while I am reluctant, just with the whole project, what's before me is, is to acknowledge the floodplain issue, and, and that is why I would say that I might not like it, but the facts show that it should be allowed to go forward.
Well, first of all, you know, I definitely want to thank the planning staff. I've dealt with a lot in the last thirty-six years, I've done, dealt with a lot of land use public hearings, and the amount of information and the method in which we got that information was, was very good, very professionally prepared. I think our planning staff did an excellent job ensuring that the Commissioners, that we had all the testimony, procedural items answered, and they did it in a timely and expedient manner. You know, I guess a couple of things I have, and someone will piggyback a little bit into what Commissioner Starett said, you know, as many people in the state of Oregon are aware, land use issues in the state of Oregon are the toughest ones for any elected body or appointed body to deal with. Those can be anything from a conditional use permit to a zone change, to a, a full use permit, to anything that has to do with land use. And the reason I don't like Oregon, I like Oregon's land use, but the reason I don't like Oregon's land use is because I found in my experience in the years that land use, no matter what it has to do, seems to always pit neighbors against neighbors, friends against friends, colleagues against colleagues, and it could be any combination of the both, but that's just the nature of land use planning. We had a lot, as I, as I went through this whole book of just a testimony for this appeal, we had a lot of information submitted to us, and I thought it was actually very good information. The issue I had, the first thing, is I took a lot of that information, I basically, per se, I read it, but I discarded it, because it doesn't have anything to do with what's in front of us today. Very passionate people, very well-meaning people, but the fact is, it didn't have anything in front of us today. But yet, I realize the value of having people come testify in person and, and provide written testimony, because that's a passion, when people have a passion about things. You know, as I got to looking at this, I, I had three things that I really considered, and I want to go back through some, some of my thinking about this, I had three things that I really wanted to consider. One was the floodwater and actually water velocity model. The appellant stated that he, his, their technical engineer stated that there was nothing wrong with the model that used, common model, there was a little bit difference in maybe what the results of that model may be as far as velocities go, but since the appellant hadn't run the model himself, I had nothing to verify whether the validity, I have a tendency to kind of agree with them, but I had nothing to verify that against. The second area I was looking at very carefully, it was, had to do with the compliance with FEMA reporting and submission requirements, and, because I think one of the appellate, the appellants actually, their engineer made the comment that the applicant had not made the signed signature to FEMA that is required, the required. Well, the more I looked at that and, and talked to legal counsel, it's not required to, because it makes specific inferences to the community, and in this case, Yamhill County is the community. So, I said, well, there's one issue that, you know, that I thought they weren't in compliance with FEMA, that turned out they weren't in full compliance with FEMA, because we are the community in that case. The third thing I, I kind of tried to hang my hat on is any of the pertinent verbal or written testimony that addresses the mining operation of Grand Island itself, or the permit for the mining operation. Those were the three things that I looked at, if I was going to deny something, those were, that's where I was going to hang my hat. As I looked at all those in the narrow scope of what we're asked to do, I don't like this application, I, I'm with Commissioner Starett, I don't like this application, I wish Baker Rock would withdraw the application, I, I wish I was on the Commission when they talked about all those previous things that you brought up, Commissioner, about the traffic and the dust, because I have very big concerns about those issues, but unfortunately, we don't get to address, we don't get to address those issues. So, I agree that it's been dumped on us, and after I looked at those three things that I was going to hang my hat on for reasons for denial of those three particular issues and the narrow scope we're giving, to tell you the truth, I believe, like, we had people testify that have a lot of experience on Grand Island, and I put a lot of belief in what they say is actually true. I believe Grand Island is changing, I believe it's going to be detrimental, I believe everything, but unfortunate, and I would, and you can't build that into a model, you can't build their education, their history, their experience, there's no way that can be built into a model. But unfortunately, that's not one of the items we have to take into consideration. So, like you, Commissioner, I wish we could start this whole process all over again, but we can't, and I don't like it, I'm totally against it, I agree with staff that, staff, some of staff doesn't like it, but I don't think that's our decision to make. So, even though I'm totally against this, I just couldn't find anything that tells me that I can hang my hat on as far as land use to deny the request.
Okay. Well, I thank you, Commissioners. Couple of points that bothered me, and we've, we've sat here and land use disputes more than once, and I can remember where the, the applicant made their case, the appellant was just as concerned, or made as good a case. By the end of the day, we actually had them talking to each other in this room, and they walked, they shook hands and walked out of here, and it was a non-issue, and I would love to see the appellants, the friends that have sent numerous documents that I have gone through, friends of Yamhill County and thousand friends. I heard testimony here in this room more than once saying, yes, we need aggregate, but not here, not now, and if there are so many places that Baker Rock could go to get this aggregate, I didn't hear the appellants making, and I went through this again to see if I missed it, pointing out where that, where those places were, where they could go and get all this rock that's available instead of taking it from Grand Island. It is a resource that's important to our county, I know we as a county... I know we, as a county, purchase a considerable amount of gravel every year because we've got a lot of gravel roads, and we need to maintain them. So we do need gravel, and we do purchase it. That's, and we aren't the only ones. So that is a commodity that is essential to keeping all of our infrastructure running. I would love to have seen documents showing where the appellants had located land and was working on maybe making some trades and helping Baker Rock to resolve this issue. I think if we would work together more than creating these adversarial positions, we could move forward a lot easier. Baker Rock is a company that has a bottom line. They are, this process, I believe, started somewhere back in 2011 or sooner. It's been going on for six or seven years. That's very, very expensive. That's going to increase the cost of rock, no matter how you slice it. We're all going to pay for this. And if we had started back in 2011, trying to form some kind of a collaborative methodology for doing this, Baker Rock purchased this property. Rock companies don't purchase property to farm on, and we knew, you know, we had to know this was a case. So I hate to be sitting here in this position today. We all do. But we do, we have a question to answer. Did Baker Rock provide us with the evidence necessary to satisfy what our ordinance requires? If you ask that simple question, the simple answer is, yes, they have. So again, like I say, I wish we could stop all this adversarial activity and get to the fact that everybody in this room, including Baker Rock, is concerned about the health and welfare of our community and our county. And I think if we approach these things from the standpoint that we all have the best interest of our community at heart, that we can resolve some of these things without dragging them out for seven years. So that being said, I would entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of the permit process and upholding the Planning Commission and the Planning Department's recommendation.
It has been moved that we uphold the recommendation of the Planning Department. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, so just to make it clear, the motion would be to deny the appeal and uphold the decision of the Planning Commission and approve the application, including the conditions contained in the staff report.
That is correct. Is that...
Great.
Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Thank you very much, and I appreciate your hard work in going through this. I can honestly say, all of this stuff has been gone through, my fellow commissioners also, and these decisions are never easy. But thank you very much for everything you brought to the table. Is there any...
Laura? Before you turn, I think we need to talk about the schedule for the next two weeks. Christian was going to come back with some information.
Okay. Well, so the hearing's closed with that issues behind this, so...
We never talked about findings coming back about Baker Rock, so... We would ask that, we have two weeks to bring the written findings. Is that sufficient? You need three weeks?
Three weeks would be better. Two weeks is possible.
Okay. So we would ask that we bring the written findings back. Is it...
March 2nd.
March the 2nd.
March 2nd for...
Yeah.
Is that sufficient?
For the submission of written findings.
So March 2nd will be the date that written findings will be presented by Baker Rock?
Correct, for final approval by the board.
For final approval by the board.
Thank you.
And we have one commissioner out that day. Will the other two of you be here on March 2nd?
Yes.
I don't show anything currently on my schedules.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for bringing that up. Okay. With that, then, Laura, you wanted to...
Christian was going to report back on a possible schedule change.
I was.
Yes. Regarding the other land use issue.
Oh, the other...
The brewery.
People.
Sixteenth.
For the sixteenth, we were looking and having session that day and having a combined on the 14th and possibly a special formal session the following week.
On the 14th, or I thought we had talked about doing something on the following Tuesday, the 21st.
I understood it was the 21st. That's what my understanding was.
So we've discussed it. What we'll do is, at this point, the plan would be to leave the item on the agenda for the 16th. At that point, we would go on record that it had been continued over to the 21st, and then we would make the final decisions at the special session scheduled for the 21st. But we'll leave the item on the agenda for the 16th as well.
Does that keep us within the timeframe that we...
The time period. Yes. I believe the 150-day time period is sometime in early March.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we're not up against the 150-day window yet.
But we have two commissioners for the formal session on the 16th.
The 16th, I will be out of town, but I said that I, I've already let Laura Cleveland know.
That you...
They may be a little late that day, but so I will be here.
Commissioner, the premise is you will be here, but Commissioner Sterrett, you might be gone.
No.
For the community justice, the justice summit.
Oh, okay.
As long as we have two commissioners, that's fine.
Okay.
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 Very good.
And then the special formal session will be the 21st. Is that what you said? Do you have a time? I'm sorry.
No, we could probably...
That's going to be a joint special session?
The commissioners will all be here for informal on Tuesday, so we could just do it either before or just after that.
Okay.
So we'll have the separate informal, and then we'll have the special session immediately after or before. If that works for all of your calendars on the day.
The 21st?
21st, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So this will, we will all get updates of this in our emails and by invitation to our calendars?
Yes.
Nope, this is all you're going to get.
Figure it out. Yes, you...
Yes, of course.
Thank you very much.
This is all.
All right. With that, then...
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, we discussed holding it here because of the space.
Sure.
Arrangement.
Okay.
Okay. Anything further?
I just have maybe a clarification. It's just more a question. It's not on the ruling we just made, but since our action on this is now completed, and we don't know if it's going to be appealed above us, we don't know if it'll be remanded, we donating the policy of talking to the public.
You're supposed to...
Regarding this.
Talk to the public after the findings are adopted.
So if, once the findings are adopted, then no matter whether it's going, we think it's going to be remanded or not, we can talk to the public after we adopt them.
That has been the policy in the past. Until an appeal is filed.
Until the, and then once the appeal files. So we have that period of time, from the time we approve the findings to the time that it's appealed, where if we... My preference is I probably won't, but we could without getting into any legal issue.
I think that's probably wise, given the likelihood.
Okay.
And that, I think, is a good approach.
Just like I said, keep me out of trouble, Christian.
We'll do our best.
Anything further? All right. With that, then, I will close the meeting of Yamhill County Commissioners for this February 9th, 2017.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.